Okay, everyone, welcome to the Selectments Meeting for January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence for Clayton Stone. Clayton Stone, ninety-three, died peacefully in his sleep on December twenty-ninth with his family by his side. He was a proud veteran of the United States Air Force, serving from nineteen fifty to nineteen fifty-four. He was a thirty-second degree mason. Clayton was a longtime member of the First Baptist Church of Abington and served as a deacon and a moderator. He sang in many local barbershop quartets. Clayton was a founding member of the Abington Citizen Police Academy Alumni Association. He co-hosted a cable show with Chief David Majewski on public safety and continued his volunteer efforts in the police department's annual fishing derby. He also organized holiday sing-alongs at the housing for the elderly. And in two thousand and eight, Clayton was recognized for his service to the community and awarded Abington's Best. Clayton will be missed by his family and all who knew him. Thank you. Okay, first up, public comments, Mr. Hagerty.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have some public comments for this meeting. Just a friendly reminder to the residents of Abington. At Town of Abington, we will be hosting a public meeting hazard mitigation via Zoom meeting for our hazard mitigation plan. For people who are curious, the hazards come in many forms, wind, heavy rains, flooding, heavy snows, et cetera. This effort is to update our plan, relies on stakeholder and public input to develop strategies that will most affect, that will be, that will be most effective to mitigation natural hazards, reduce vulnerability, and adapt to our climate change, uh, change in climate, excuse me. The results of the planning process will inform future town spending on natural hazard mitigation, risk reduction, and climate resilience. This virtual meeting, you can get the link on the town website if you scroll all the way down. There will be for the virtual hazard mitigation plan meeting. Then if you click on that and then on that link, there will be for January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, from six P M. to eight P M. So hopefully residents tune into that, it should be a good discussion. For other public announcements, I have, I just have two more, sorry. The Woodsdale Elementary PTO is sponsoring a snowball for the third and fourth graders on Friday, February thirteenth, from six to seven thirty P M. The Woodsdale PTO are asking for parent volunteers for the event. Please email woodsdaleprotwo, the number two, at gmail dot com to volunteer or ask questions. All parent volunteers must have a query on file with the school in order to volunteer for the snowball. And lastly, just in, in general terms for our residents. As one Abington Selectman, I firmly believe it is vitally important to protect our community's greenery, wildlife, natural resources, and wetlands. I continue to be proud of the dedicated service that our Conservation Commission, an open space committee, does to preserve Abington's natural beauty. So thank you to the Conservation Commission and to the Open Space Committee for all the work that you do for Abington. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Ms. Hagerty. Kevin?
Yeah, I guess not more of an announcement, but Scott, I got contacted by some residents that were talking about us, not at public events. I just want to make sure we're not missing emails or anything coming through the filter. Could you maybe check that, make sure?
Will do.
Thank you.
Tim?
Just a reminder that Abington Little League two thousand and twenty-three registration is now open for any child five to fifteen. The deadline for registration is this Sunday, January twenty-third. They need the time to make sure that uniform orders come in, so make sure that your child signed up by the fifteenth.
Mike?
I just want to thank again Public Health Nurse Lindsay Wright, as well as Amy Barrett over at the Senior Center. We had a resident found himself homeless, found himself hard, on some hard times, just ended up homeless. He was homeless for quite a bit where it was starting to get cold and, you know, we were trying to figure out things to do for him. They were able to find him emergency housing and just goes to show what kind of people they are. And, you know, it was no small task to do it, so thank you to them. Second of all, everyone's seen Damar Hamlin last Monday night. To keep it short, I think everyone saw what early CPR and early defibrillation helps. And if anyone's interested, CPR is so much simpler than it used to be. It used to scare a lot of people, you know, having to do the mouth-to-mouth, and now it's just pump, pump away. So if anyone's interested, they should check out the American Heart Association at heart.org, or they can also reach out to the fire department, we can set you in the right direction. But that's it.
Thank you. I have one announcement. As many of you know, my wife and I, along with some other members of the town, started the HUG Foundation several years ago. And one of our biggest events each year is the HUG Foundation Hockey Game against the Boston Bruins alumni. We will be doing that again on April eighth of this year at the Rockland Ice Rink at one o'clock. Tickets are now on sale. And HUG Foundation donates to individuals and families in need, mostly in Abington and around Abington. And also, we stock the Little Free pantry every day. We started that during COVID. And amazingly enough, we stock it every day and the food is gone every day, so there is still a need out there. So tickets are available at the HUG Foundation website, that's helpusgive, ma, dot org, or on our Facebook page, or you can reach out to myself, or a lot of the businesses around will have it. And just to let you know, we have some, they have some new members with the Bruins alumni, including Zanay Ochara, Tuukka Rask, and Adam McQuade, who've been playing some games. Not sure who will be in our game, we don't get the roster yet, but there's a possibility of some pretty big names there this year. Tickets are fifteen dollars for adults and five for kids. And again, reach out to myself, or check out the website, or find us on Facebook. Thank you. Okay. Why don't we go to vote to approve the minutes, December twelfth?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our meeting December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Request for appointment to council on agent, Ellen Delaney. Ellen, would you like to come up? Believe this is the only applicant we have. It is? Well, thank you for applying. You do a lot in town and we do appreciate it.
Thank you. Ellen Delaney, eighteen, Washington, Missouri. Is the current--
Can you bring that mic?
Cut being short. As the current chair of the Abington Housing Authority, I'm also on the Affordable Housing Trust. I deliver meals on wheels, I spend a lot of time at the Senior Center. And I do already attend all the council on agent meetings because I like to let the seniors of the housing authority know of what's going on. So this is just a natural progression for me, so I hope you appoint me. Thank you.
Can you confirm or deny that Naked Pickleball is making a comment to town?
No comment.
I've seen that on Facebook, so it must be true.
If it's on Facebook, it's true.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ellen Delaney to be council on agent. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Congratulations, and thank you.
Someone looking for a referee job, is he?
Okay, time being six forty, we have a public hearing. Is the applicant here?
Wesley?
Are you my guest?
Oh, okay.
Somebody in the hall. Are you, are you here for a call?
Wesley Zhang?
Yes.
Okay. We have a request for a common vic license, Yaz Sushi and Ramen, eight hundred Brockton Ave., number five.
Right to the voting.
Yeah. Thank you. Why don't you give us a little background on, on you and what's your plan on doing?
So I'm the first, first one, open to restaurant. So I don't have any restaurant background, but I'm a chef, chef assistant, I have, you have all the background for restaurants. So I hope we can complete it over here. So we tuna sushi and ramen is over there. Yeah, I hope we can open that restaurant.
So this is going where?
This is going to the whole hospital.
Right, right. Which recently closed down. Anyone in the audience have anything to say on this? We have the reports from our department heads.
The only thing I see is Chris Carmichael wants a floor plan after everything's made out.
That, and also--
Thank you.
The H A C--
He's out to the Port of Health?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So you're aware of both of those, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I did talk to Chris already.
Okay, good.
Has he come by for that?
Yeah, I have to, he did came by today.
He came by today?
Yeah, he came by afternoon this day.
When are you planning on opening?
Beginning of next month.
Oh, good. Okay, do I, any more discussion, anyone?
Monday through Friday, Saturday, and then you could close on Sundays?
We, yes, close on Sunday.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the common victual licenses for Yaz Sushi and Ramen, eight hundred Brockton Ave., number five. Night guy Wesley Zhang, manager, pending the-- the, yeah, the H A A C P and the certificate of inspection from the owner and a site visit to ensure property gets into, calculate the article.
Yeah, second motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Marcella?
You're also.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our list is an update from the Fire Station DPW Building Committee.
Hey, gentlemen.
How are you?
Good.
Good to see you.
I'm Derek Kamati, I'm the chairman of the Fire Station DPW Building Committee, and I'm here to give you guys an update on the progress that we've made. This process started back in September two thousand and nineteen, so it's been a long, it's been a long process so far. Back then, we, we had a feasibility study done for the fire station. And after that, the feasibility study came back and approved two locations that we wanted to look at. We spent a lot of time looking through all those locations, one being the North School and a second being across from the high school here on Glenwood Way. The committee voted and agreed that the Glenwood Way site was the preferred site from the two. There's a lot of different reasons for that, mainly one location, it was geographically centered to, for the town. It also had the size constraints that we were looking for, it was a larger property. The North School site itself, although it was just over three acres, it, it would pose a lot of issues because of the hard angles for the corners of that property. So although it is three acres, it's, it's not all three acres that are usable. We saw that to be an issue to try to fit the building and be able to fit all the things that we'd need to be able to do on that property. Ultimately, we decided to go the route for Glenwood Way. It was the only property that was currently available. The town did its due diligence and we worked with the town manager and we sent out a request for information for any property owners that were throughout the corridor of, of the town to try to find any other privately owned location that we could try to fit the building. And at that time, that was the, we never got anything back from that, so the only thing we could really do was try to focus on the Glenwood Way site. That took a lot of time to try to access, and ultimately, we weren't able to get approved to go through to that property. But luckily enough, at the same time, Director Stone from the DPW started expressing interest of looking into getting a new DPW facility, because their facility is also aging and needs to be redone. They're having issues currently with the, with, with their current facility. So we took that as an opportunity, as using that site on Central Street as an ideal location, but we never looked at it originally because it was already occupied by the DPW and the police station. But we took the opportunity to discuss with the O P M. in the town and decide that maybe doing a joint complex would benefit the residents in the town altogether. By doing a combination project, we'd be able to save some funds as, as opposed to doing two separate projects altogether and try to make a public safety complex. What we did right prior to that was at town meeting, we appropriated three point five million dollars to get us through the whole process of building the fire station. And we end up going back to a following town meeting and asked for an amendment so we could add the DPW to that. Since then, we've been able to get their feasibility stun, done and get them all the way up to the process, the, the section where we were with the fire station. So now we've been working together, meeting bi-weekly, having meetings, trying to design a building that's going to have a lot of shared space and that's going to reduce the overall cost. That was the main goal, because we knew the fire station alone was already kind of expensive and we wanted to do what was right for the town and try to see if we can get two different things that could potentially be expensive individually and combine them and try to find savings. We ended up joining into schematic design with the Architects K B A and our O P M., the owner's project manager. And at our meetings, we were able to come together and put together a conceptual design that would fit the property, that would house all the things that we needed to house. But originally, that conceptual project came in at a pretty large amount of seventy million dollars, just about. So we continued to work through schematic design and we worked together to find more joint spaces and find ways to tie that building down. And we're almost finished with schematic design, we're looking to be done in February. And at that point, we're right now approximately around fifty-five million dollars. So we trimmed off quite a bit to try to make it as palatable as possible. That is going to be able to house an entire fire station and all the current needs that we need, as well as a full DPW, a modern DPW, that'll house everything that they have as well. And we'd be able to fit it all onto that property. It'll give us a great location overall. There's a lot of benefits to having a public safety complex, which a lot of communities around us are doing. Some of the big things that are coming from that are having centralized fuel station, so all the town vehicles will be able to go right to the fuel station that's there. Not that we can't go there now, but it's just easier when it's on property. Another large factor that's going to be great is that we're looking into putting in a wash bay, specific wash bay that's going to be part of the DPW building, but it's going to be accessible by all town vehicles. This will have an underwash, which will actually, from some of the statistics from other departments, that has the ability to extend the life of all the vehicles for the town, which is something that would be pretty important to do. It also gives us-- a mechanic on site, that's kind of the largest piece of the puzzle. We all bring our vehicles to the mechanic at the DPW, and having the mechanic on site would be a huge advantage for us. Being able to have the vehicles readily accessible and be able to be maintained on a proper schedule without having to take anything majorly out of service, moving things around would be a huge, huge benefit for us. So right now, we're approximately a month away from finishing up schematic design. After schematic design, we're going to be going into design development. That's where we're going to start to hone in more of the costs and the ins and outs of the entire structure, all, all the different structures that we're trying to build for us. We're going to ultimately have a primary fire station that will house the DPW administration, and that'll be a combo building toward the front of Central Street, where the current front garage is. There would be a separate DPW building in the back that would house all their apparatus. There's also going to be new salt sheds that are desperately needed for the town. This would also move some things around on that side of the property, but we'd be able to have plenty of parking and be able to utilize some of the police department's parking as well. We're also putting in some other joint combination rooms that the police will be able to use as well. So that way, we're kind of tying all the departments together right in that central location. A lot of people have asked about grants, so we've done our due diligence on that and we've been in contact with Allison Sullivan. She's been reaching out to Senator Keenan and Congressman Lynch, and she's trying her best to try to see if there's any funds that are ever going to come up as far as being available for public safety buildings. Being a public safety complex does open up a wider branch of grants that are available, if they do become funded. So she's got her ears to the ground and trying to find out if anything of that is ever going to come up. And if it does, we will try to take advantage of that. Other than that, that's really kind of where we're at. Hopefully, when we get into design development, that will start sometime toward the end of February. We'll have full schematic design plans and the general cost to present at Spring Town Meeting. And that's just going to be an informational presentation, more of an update from the town manager on what we're looking at and where we are. And then hopefully, having design development done prior to any fall special meeting, if there is one.
And that's when you'd be looking for the town to vote?
That would be the time.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have a special town meeting and a special election.
Yeah, so this would require a, a town meeting approval and a ballot. Right, just like the school?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Any questions?
Who's the number you said on the second schematic?
So the, where we're at, where we're at right now? We're just around fifty-five million dollars.
Fifty-five, okay. And let's say fifty or fifty-five. Kind of roughly described it. Would it be the police department stays as it is, would it be adding on to the side of the police station? Or would it be a whole separate bill, like all three separate buildings or four separate buildings or?
It'd be, the police station would stay as is.
Yeah.
We would be putting the fire station and DPW admin building as a combination building toward the front of Central Street. The DPW apparatus and, they, they would have several different parts to this building. It's a larger, essentially an apparatus parking, but it also houses some offices and some other smaller ancillary rooms that, that are required for the DPW. That would be in the back, and then there'd be a new salt shed that would replace the ones that we currently have.
Would it be all one floor, would it be like second floor to any of it?
So the fire station would be two floors. The DPW back building, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's a single story with a, with a mezzanine. So it's not really two stories, but it does, it has a lot of height, because a lot of the, the apparatus that we both drive are pretty tall.
Would the gas pumps and everything now have to be relocated?
We would be relocating them, but we'd be doing a more modern above-ground fuel pump, only because that's dead center of the property.
Yeah.
So in order to get everything to kind of fit onto the lot, it would have to get moved.
And then what about, I know it's early on, but what about the, the streets, the intersections? Any impediments, any major changes with any of that stuff?
Nope, Central Street is a, a road that we actually use quite frequently, so there's not a lot different that would change. The police already use it to respond from there if they're at, if they're at their station. But we respond down that street quite often.
Okay.
We actually utilize that road a lot of times, especially when we have to get from one side of town to the other, depending on how we're responding to a call, just because it's the one road that doesn't block us from getting stuck by the, the train.
And then, again, early on, but where, I mean, they're not all connected, but it sounds like the, at least the fire and the D W. be connected. Would there almost be another, say, community room or joint command staff room?
Absolutely, yep. There's going to be a, a large community room that's going to be there, that could be utilized for all sorts of different things. It's going to be open to the public, but it could be utilized for just about anything. It'll be a modern room that could be utilized for all sorts of incidents or, or any other projects that are needed to be done in town.
Awesome.
And there'll be obviously, there'll be a, every fire station, police station, they all have fitness centers. The current fitness center for the police is actually housed in that front DPW building. So we'll be replacing that with a central fitness room that all the departments can have access to.
I was going to ask that too, that's perfect.
Yep, so everybody will have access to that, yep.
And then that will essentially would eliminate the, the other two stations completely, right?
So right now, we're, the recommendation and with talks with the town manager, the, the goal would be to, to not utilize the Bedford Street location for the fire department, but possibly maintain the smaller station at five Rockland Street, only because it has an apparatus bay that we could store spare vehicles at. And there's also the potential to use that for other things that the town may need.
Great, and then my last question was DPW. Would like the, the building where you are, John, and the sewer department, would those all move over as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we would almost have everything--
Everything works fine.
Yep.
Wow, that's awesome.
More productive.
Yeah, it'd be, everything would be in the same location, it'd be a true public safety complex.
That's awesome.
And we'd still maintain that, that, that project from the street intersection where, where the DPW director is now.
Yeah.
That we still have to maintain because of the, the pump that's there.
Yeah.
So that building would still be there and still be accessible for whatever use might have to come up. But that's still going to be a, a, a building that we'll, we'll have.
That's awesome. You guys did a lot of homework and a lot of work on this, so--
It's come a long way.
It's not, it's forgotten, appreciate all the hard work you guys have done and it sounds like you put a ton of thought into it and appreciate all the time.
Absolutely, thank you.
The existing repair building, John, is that staying?
Staying.
That building staying?
Yes, from nineteen ninety-eight, so it's staying.
Yeah, I was going to say twenty twenty, so.
Yeah, that, that particular mechanics, actual mechanic room?
Yeah.
That, it's, it's--
But everything else on that site--
Everything else around it would be renovated. And we'd be updating on top of that, the, the, some of the storage units that are next to that. This is all part of the, in the schematic design. That also houses two of the, there's an indoor and outdoor police structure that, that would be getting updated as well.
That was, that was actually my question, the basketball courts out front. In my eyes, it's way too busy of a complex to have those there still. I mean, I'd like to have them relocated.
The--
The design, how does it look right now?
So trying to fit the basketball courts on there is going to be extremely difficult. It's the committee's recommendation to, to remove them.
Yeah.
But if you, if those are removed and everything goes the way it should, there'll be, there'll be a primary entrance for DPW bil, apparatus to be able to drive in. That wouldn't impede the police and it wouldn't impede the fire department. And they'd be able to access their, their, their main building in the back. There would be a main entrance for the police department, just like they have now, with all their parking still pretty much the same in the rear of the building. Then we would also have a pull-through to where the gas pumps currently are. That would be the general location of this wash bay, where all the apparatus could drive through that, be cleaned before they get stored. And the fire apparatus, when coming back from a call, would come through that primary entrance that's there now and pull to the left and pull around and drive through the building. And the apparatus bay for the actual fire department would be parallel with Central Street. So any responses that we would have, we'd just be able to pull straight out, either take a left or a right. And we wouldn't have any impeding of traffic, because it's a main road that we already go down, but it would give us access to both sides of town and not have to worry about the train, which is, that actually makes a big difference when it comes to response times.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see the courts moved, I know it's early on in the stages, but--
It, it'd be very difficult to try to fit, if anything, we, there, there could be the potential to try to fit one, but the recommendation would be it's too busy to--
It almost makes no sense.
It'd be so busy there, it'd make more sense, at least from the committee's point of view, is to, to relocate them. And there's several locations in town that could definitely utilize that.
I know we just, we're relying Green Street, which is nice and, but--
They are really nice, yeah.
Plenty of locations, yeah.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So, awesome.
Great.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience?
Perfect. I appreciate that.
Can you, can you make sure that you invite Kevin to the grade open?
I want to cut the ribbon.
You can cut the ribbon, sure. Yeah, that'd be nice.
Actually, it's a coupling of poses.
Yeah. Don't use fire tools.
It's like one of those escape rooms, you gotta figure it out.
Great, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So before we move on, I did want Chief Matt Alt to give us an update, if you don't mind, on the ambulance. And DPW director, give us a quick update on something.
I apologize, I missed what you want me to talk about.
Your ambulance situation.
Oh!
Unless it's not a problem.
No, it's, it's good. So just to bring the board up to speed, I know Scott is certainly up to speed on this, as is-- So just to bring the board up to speed, I know Scott is certainly up to speed on this, as is the DPW mechanic. We're having an issue with the ambulances. Mainly, to bring everybody up to speed, the Abington, the town of Abington, the fighter maintains three ambulances. A two thousand eight, a two thousand fourteen, and a two thousand twenty, or two thousand nineteen, I think it is. Those are our main ambulances. Our newest ambulance, which is A2, which is a two thousand nineteen, it blew the engine back in October. October eleventh, it was responding, just the engine, it's a Ford F-550, the engine just went. It will be covered under warranty. However, it's the time. We had been waiting this entire time for all of the parts to come in. We're actually getting a complete engine from, from the engine, from the radiator, from the engine, all the way to the tailpipe and all of the exhaust issues with the emission issues and like that, with that. It's completely getting rebuilt, but it's taken until hopefully, literally today, the parts, the final parts were supposed to come in, where the ambulance is now being housed up in, I think it's Alabaro, waiting for these parts to come in. So that's been out of service since October. We have relied on our second primary ambulance, which was always a primary ambulance. Everything that we have at one point was the main ambulance. And then when that gets tired, we get another one and we downgrade it. It's still running all the time. And then we downgrade it as a spare, which we immediately put in the service, and we are just running these into the ground. It just, Route eighteen didn't help, Route one twenty-three didn't help. The project was important, but it wasn't great in the chassis. So these are taking a beating. So I'm hoping to get our primary ambulance, our newest one, back this month. I'll believe it when I see it, to be honest with you, but we're hoping to get that back. So now I have my two thousand nineteen, my two thousand fourteen ambulance is the primary and the secondary. They both go all the time. And the older ambulance would be, the two thousand eight is back as a spare in case one of those goes down for maintenance or anything. In the meantime, since the main ambulance has been out, the other two ambulances at one point both went out for whatever reason. Luckily, we have the mechanic in town and they were able to get it back up. But for a while, we're waiting for parts on those. So we had borrowed an ambulance from Whitman and an ambulance from Norwell. Actually, I have reached out to every area chief and those were kind of the ones I was able to, at the time, get. They're not available now because they're using them. They were their spears. Their spears are actually newer than our, one of our primaries. That's a separate conversation we're going to have. We're trying to find a different way of funding how we can purchase these. Because the old model we used to use, where we're getting, you know, it's like a five-year lease payment and then a five-year lease payment. Before you know it, you have a fifteen-year-old ambulance constantly getting replaced. We're not getting fifteen years out of these anymore for a number of issues. And we've really built these strong, we've got really heavy chassis on these. Now it's electronics, it's the emissions, the emissions are killing us. We're starting to get that in the fire engines. I really wish the public safety was exempt from all these federal emission stuff. Alex, I agree, I'm trying to save the environment too, but we're trying to keep vehicles running. And these things are not easy to repair, and when they do go down, we can't get the parts for them. It's getting worse. So we will be asking for a new ambulance at the town meeting. And the cost of these, it's actually making me sick to even have to ask for it, but it's the going cost of an ambulance now, is about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I never thought I'd be seeing that. And really, even if we get funding, if we get a positive vote at this town meeting, we're probably twenty-four months out before we can even get it. The good news is you don't have to pay anything until that point. You don't, we don't pay for anything until we receive the item. But we, you know, by voting that in, we can lock in the contract to get that built. In the meantime, we're working, and I've kept Scott up to date on this, and one of our firefighters, Justin Silva, I can't thank him enough. We think we may have access to a newer used ambulance that an area town is replacing that should be coming in in a couple of months. They're replacing a two thousand eighteen ambulance, and it's going back to the same deal that we use, basically is used. I think for a good deal on that. We've got kind of a verbal handshake with the vendor on this, I'll believe it when I see it. We may be able to have a stopgap solution to this probably twenty thousand dollar, twenty-five thousand dollar ballpark for a probably a two thousand eighteen ambulance. That is the deal of the century, to be honest with you. And it's the same pain scheme as Abington. So we're working on that. To try, we still need a new one because that's two years out. So we're trying to get ahead of this. And Abington is not alone in this problem at all. We're actually ahead of a lot of towns. Most of the towns are running into this now with engines or ladder trucks. It's about thirty-six months to get a ladder truck now. Luckily, we're in, knock on wood, we're in good shape with our tower truck. And everybody nationwide, we're running into this. It's just, it's the backup and the cost increase on this major apparatus is, it's going to be an issue. So we're actually not as bad as we could be, so many other towns are starting to hit this. But that's where we're at with the ambulances. We're working to try to, we definitely need a new one. I'm looking to see if there's a real decent, kind of used one that may fill a gap that I think we're really going to need. Because we've been borrowing ambulances from our communities and they're getting harder to get because they're using their spears as well. Scott, anything else on that?
No, I just wanted them to get the heads up on that. And again, we're going to continue working on, you know, if we can pick up that spare ambulance, that'll be great. We'll find some funding. We might have to come to this board and to the finance committee for reserve fund or if we can find it in the budget, find. Some stuff that is, some information's come out of Plymouth County, considering opera funds may help us get over this also. We'll know more about that next month, so. But we are going to have to move forward and you will see an article most likely for an ambulance in town meeting warrant.
The good news is we really haven't skipped a beat on this. We always maintain and operate two ambulances. First call comes in, usually it's out of station two. That ambulance goes out, the second call that comes in, it's coming out of station one. And we're running these constantly. So during all of this event between borrowing from Whitman, borrowing from Norwell, we were able to maintain two ambulances. However, there's a training factor with that, as well as, I don't know if you call it a fatigue factor or just a, you know, a muscle memory factor with the crews. You know, when they come in on shift, what ambulance are we using today? Who's, you have to get familiar with this equipment, as you know. It's, you know, you're, you could be literally working a cardiac arrest in the back of the ambulance you've never been in before. Where are we storing this? They're all kind of similar, but things may be in different locations, so there's a training component with this. We're trying to get out of that too. I mean, the crews have done a great job on this. You know, we haven't, you know, missed anything on that, but we've, we're trying to solve this long-term, so.
Would you keep four ambulances?
I don't believe so. I think if we were to get another ambulance, the two thousand eight, that would immediately be retired. That probably should have been retired, but we had no choice. The state inspectors are getting harder as well. I'll be honest with you, I'm a little concerned about when they come to inspect it. And it's not, it's kind of minor embarrassing stuff. It could be a hairline crack in the body somewhere. They're looking for us on the floorboards that they're lifting up the carpets. They're doing the job, I'm not criticizing them. However, it's not easy.
Yeah.
I don't think these should be critical failures, but they will. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And John Stone, would you like to give us an update?
Actually, yeah, well, actually, it's more just news on this.
Yeah, on this other thing here.
If I can get it back.
Well, we applied for and received a grant to continue the bike path that we put down, Glenwood Way. And it's going to run the entire length of Washington Street. Five hundred thousand dollar grant.
Nice.
We just got notified last week, so.
Yeah, and I really, I wanted John to.
That's the map right there. It also includes two thousand feet of granite curb and new sidewalk. Which is badly needed on Washington, as well as other roads.
So it's going to go down to Washington Street and go both ways?
The bike path is going to go the entire length, funding permitted. As long as prices don't go haywire and things of that nature, the bike path will traverse the entire length of Washington.
Nice.
The cymbals, the fog line, and the granite curbing sidewalk will extend from the first entrance to the four-wheel to Adams.
Is there anything we can do with that Washington-Adams intersection to help?
The Old Colony Plenary Council did perform a road safety audit there about six years ago, Chief.
Yeah.
And the feeling was, no one wanted to do anything with it. We could easily do something with it, but fire didn't want to do anything with it. And the police at the time didn't want to do anything with it.
I feel like there was like some design that instead, that came out to a stop sign, one stop sign there.
We could fix it easily, but it has to do with the radius.
He was trying to get around it.
Or I think at the time, you were looking at North School for the fire station. You didn't want to make any changes there.
The talk was something like a Monroe Street.
Is that something we could, I mean, maybe work it, like look at again?
Absolutely.
Even with this project, if we're going to be kind of working in that area?
Yep, totally.
Yeah, and the nice part about this project, and John, you know, great job on this. But we've been working on some other initiatives, a lot of them, you know, I'm going to bring up next month and, or excuse me, at our next meeting. But a lot have to do with things that are in the master plan that we're trying to get done and some stuff that we've been working on. Tim and Alex, myself, and Les Shea on actually connecting and making some corridors of connection. So more on that next month, though.
Yeah, we have a lot of projects coming up in the spring. I hope you guys want to come back sometime.
You can hit on it, that's February.
Oh, those are great.
In February eleven, I brought these.
A lot of pictures, a lot of numbers, small words, diagrams.
Yeah, let's do that in February, so.
Valentine's Day.
Make sure it's all color. Thanks for everything, John. Okay, our next item is an update on the base redevelopment plan with Mr. Roger Woods. We all have a packet that he's given us.
Could have been a PowerPoint.
Good evening all, Roger Woods, rep to the Southfield redevelopment. Couple things. One I wanted to touch on, I think just about everybody on the board had requested a site walk at some point, and we have one tentatively scheduled for February eleventh at nine AM. It's a Saturday, I thought, which was the best day for everybody since you guys work.
Oh, some of us.
What we'll be doing is beating with some of the board, well, Alex doesn't work, but the rest of you do. The, we're going to, you know, you'll see what Abington owns, you know. The land we just took with the Coast Guard at auction, which I'll touch on. So everybody will get an idea of what's going on over there right now. At a later date, and just to get into it, New England Development Brookfield Properties of the developer. They're going to be coming to the town tentatively this fall with a final plan on the redevelopment. Once that plan comes to our board and becomes public, then we'll have another site walk with them. So they can say, this is where this is going, this is where we propose this. But I thought, and I know you guys all thought, it was best to come over now, let's take a look at what's there, understand what's there. And then, once we have a final plan, everybody can come again with the developer and we can get into specifics, which we don't have yet anyway. So a couple of things. As everybody knows, this project has had stops and starts due to many, many issues. But right now, things seem to be moving in the right direction, believe it or not. I think we have a very good developer in place, which Kevin Donovan, who happens to be here, was instrumental in getting assigned over there. And I think everybody, especially, I think in everybody, every town, but especially in Abington, infrastructure's the big deal over there. We need to solve water, sewer, and transportation. Obviously, we have water problems here, as everybody else does, PFAS and everything else. What the developer will be doing is they'll be making a proposal to present to all three towns. And that'll address those three big issues. The packet that you have was a presentation that the developer put together, which I think they did a pretty good job. It's pretty extensive on everything that needs to be dealt with. Regulation, they have a map in there about open space. But the biggest problem we've had so far to be able to get off the ground, which again, I want to say that Kevin Donovan was instrumental in getting solved, is if you turn to page eighteen nineteen, that gives you a map of the ownership of the land, let's just say a year ago, the ownership of the base. The big issue was, when the developer went under, there were several, and I mean several owners, of different parcels of land in there. If you look on page nineteen to the map to the right, as opposed to the map to the left, you can see that we've gotten all of the land ownership just about under one umbrella. No development could go forward and no, no presentation could be put together for the future development without having control of the land. If you owned a piece, he owned a piece, she owned a piece, you're not going to get anything done. In the past, they've done stops and starts on, we're going to build some, you know, apartments there or some houses there, or we tried to do commercial there, and it didn't work. This development team's putting together a comprehensive plan for development of the base. It's going to include open space, it's going to deal with traffic concerns. Obviously, they can't do anything without addressing water and sewer concerns. So as your representative, I'm feeling very confident that this development team is the right development team. And I feel that we've gotten to a point, the collective, that they're going to be able to move forward and give us a comprehensive plan that makes sense to come to the town, all of the towns in the fall for approval. And that, I think, is basically it. And I mean, there's a lot there, but there isn't a lot that we can get into because we don't know yet. But I wanted to at least come up. I've tried to keep Scott up to date on whatever comes up, so he knows what's going on. And like I have, Kevin is a resource to tap into, he's an expert over there. So, but I do think that this is the right development team. And I think we have a good chance of having a development finished over there that we all hoped for in the beginning, which was twenty, twenty-some odd years ago, I think now.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Yeah, so, that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Woods? Any questions from the audience?
I hope Tim likes the package, I didn't realize it.
It's so pretty, those colors and everything.
I just hope Kevin gets invited to February eleven. Mr. Shea.
Joseph Shea, free Wyman Road. Abington, I'm the Abington Member Device Board for the Southway Development. Based on what we've, we've had plans come to the town before us. Based on what we had, I think one thing that needs to be kept in mind is you're going to, the developer and the tri-town is going to need to have several problem meetings with the public or with boards to bring them up to date on what is happening. To prepare, to see what questions people have, to try and get the public up to date on, try to get them a favor of what we need. Just go to town meeting with a plan, no matter how good, it's dangerous. You're going to have to probably meet with, obviously you have to meet with the police department, police, the fire, and highway, and probably water and sewer to some degree. But you're also going to have to meet with conservation, you're going to have to meet with, you should meet with conservation, the planning board, maybe ACBA, depending on what's being done there. But you're going to need to meet with all those groups, those committees. So it's going to take time, you need to get that stuff started fast. As soon as you have some concepts. Because if you wait till the last moment, it's going to get very, very tricky to try and do it. Because we've gone through this before. Kevin, you agree?
Yeah, no.
Thank you.
And I think I speak, I'm speaking for myself, just thank you to Mr. Woods and Kevin Donovan for all the work that you've put into this, into this project. And again, it's been a decades, two decades-long project with Southfield, Union Point. So, and no, I think, and I think you've said this before too, we will definitely be meeting with department heads and working with the three communities that is involved in this project. So I'll keep up the good work. I think this is definitely, seeing this develop, our map-controlled plan, I think this is really a step in the right direction. So my hats off to both of you and the work that you've put into this, so thank you.
Yeah, the developer's been the key to this, just, I want to say that. And Joe, I concur with what Joe said. We're going to be doing lots of meetings. This isn't just going to be a drop at a town meeting, because we want the people to, A, understand it, we want their input, and we want them on, we want them to be comfortable, because it's been stops and starts. I was a kid when this started, and now I'm old, so.
Well, I don't know about a kid.
I was a kid, so.
I was three, so it was nineteen ninety-eight, I was three.
We all want this to get done, but we want it to get done smart, and I think.
We've been promised things for years.
Absolutely.
Now, this time, it actually looks like it could actually happen.
I think this, I think this is the best, best group that we've seen, so. And I'll keep Scott, town manager, up to date, you know, daily as things necessary, but I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm looking forward to the lock on February eleven, that's great. I know I've been talking with different select board members in Rockland, and I know they were really eager to do this, so this is awesome.
I think the chairman of our board is reaching out, the Rockland representative, Tom Henderson, who does a great job. He's reaching out to the board also to see if they want to come that day, which I think will make it easier. So, all right, great, thank you.
Right, it's premature, I'm sure with the new owner, but do you have a sense of what maybe, if anything, may be built in the Abington portion? You know, a lot of it, we had a lot of weddings like that, and we're seeing a lot of these massive housing units just over the lines in the north. Do you get a sense they're going to try to do that?
Honestly, I have no idea. They've been close to the vest. The biggest problem has been the ownership. As you can see, looking at the map. been the ownership. As you can see, looking at the map, when I first saw the map, it's staggering. How could you propose anything over there? Because, you know, it's so much jumbled ownership. Now it's under, most of it's under control. There's still a few pieces, parcels we're trying to get from the government, which hopefully we'll be able to. But to answer your question, chief, not, not yet. I think they were, Joe, how many, what was it? A million square feet of commercial space originally? Three million or some?
We've gone through so many, if you can go back to the original plan from while up there, that we've had a variety of different plans. And I think one concern that has been up in the last few years is the amount of commercial, I don't know, check out the down plate. And there's also problems with some of the residents up there, because they were not, they couldn't, they didn't even have places up there to, if they live there, they have places to go for coffee.
Right.
I mean, so I mean, we don't know what the, I, we have, well, I think 188, but some of that is open space, and it's not developed. So, and I, some of, I don't know if the Navy still owns any up there, but it looked like they owned a few parcels, or is it gonna happen?
Yeah, I'm not sure specifically. Our map is pretty detailed, so.
Yeah, I know, I know Conservation had looked into this, and I know a few members have looked at, roughly 4% of our property is wetlands.
Yeah, and there's, you'll see on the map, there's an extensive green space plan that they're looking to do. Not just around the whole edge, you know, the outer perimeter, but over the runways and things like, you know, six-foot deep.
Yeah, they look cool in there, the north, south, or the east, west.
Right, exactly. The corridor, they're gonna.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Alex, the Navy property, the Navy area that's designated as open space in the plan, even though it's not wetland, wildlife habitat and so forth. So if the wetlands, maybe, the wetland area alone may be less than the amount of open space that has been protected in early plans. And some of that was agreed to with the federal government by the deeper process years ago.
The, the rest of the land that's still not developed, that's owned by, it looks like Endeavor maybe, is that?
They're a private company.
So they're hold, like, is that holdouts in the land that they're holding on to their sections?
That's probably an accurate description at the, at the moment.
And then the back part of the property, it looks like there's still some Navy land or?
There's still some government land.
Okay. Is that?
I think US Forestry has a parcel, Navy still has a few parcels, but the SRA, working with the developer, has been able to put most of the pieces back together, which were, I think what happened is the developer got into trouble before, and then they started divvy know, borrowing money from here and there, and they ended up foreclosing those, those entities and took ownership. We've managed to get most of them back. We got the Coast Guard land back, we had a buy at auction for a little over six million, which was considerably more than we were hoping to pay, but developer funded most of that. So they work, they are extending themselves to make this, you know, a doable project. And they have a great track record, which you'll see we have in the packet. So.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, the next is a discussion on the Glenwood Way property. Now, which property exactly are we talking about, Scott?
Let's see if I can bring it up.
Pictures?
Maybe. A map I drew.
You drew this map? Don't have the best record of drawing maps.
All right, if I will use the town website.
Thank you.
Oh, nice. Is that what we're putting there?
Is that the scheme? Please don't.
So, these are the photo, these are the maps.
So that's the, the land that we bought several years ago. We paid, Mr. Woods, what did we pay for that land? Six?
What was that?
On Glenwood Way?
My answer would be not nearly enough.
Five, five seventy-five, that's what I was gonna say. Yeah, so we bought those three lots for $575,000 a few years ago. And I will say that I received a text tonight from Ann Riley that has asked, and it was to myself and to the board, so I'll share it with you, that she would prefer not to see housing there, and maybe basketball courts or something. So, this kinda leads us to Kevin's.
Well, maybe I should start off.
All right.
Why I asked you to put this on your agenda.
Okay, why don't you do that, then?
Remember to take it.
Yeah. Yes, Kevin.
Alex, if I could, just as it relates to that property, one of the things I mentioned at the Fire Station Building Committee was, I agree with Kevin. I don't think those basketball courts align.
Right.
At the police station, and either relocate them here or to, I don't know about it.
No, I think, I don't think you'll find too many of us arguing with that point. But go ahead, Scott, then.
So the reason I brought these parcels up is, recently, the Habitat for Humanity did reach out to the Affordable Housing Trust with some interest in, just some general parcels around town, and, you know, trying to identify if we did have any that would be available for development. At one point in time, and, I don't know, Roger might have bailed out quick, I don't blame him. At one point in time, there was actually a project, there was a.
There were, there were.
Approval approvals here.
Yeah, he had, I believe, 12 units on each lot. Either eight or 12. Was it 18? Okay, six on each lot, then, yeah.
So, I did share it with Habitat. They're interested, not in something at that, of that magnitude, but they would be interested in doing something. And they were also interested in doing something that would have, you know, an affordable component, obviously, it's Habitat, and senior component. Again, just like any other project in town, if this board had any interest in going forward with such a project, it would have to be made available to anybody, and not just Habitat. But that being said, there are other options that we can or might want to explore, and that's kinda what I put it in front of this board to decide. Because yes, things have been brought up, you know, whether it might be basketball courts, hockey rink, pickleball, fully clothed pickleball. You know, so do we, you know, at some point, we wanna make some decisions on what we wanna do with that property and, and go forward with it. Again, Habitat would be interested, so I would assume others might be interested also. It is a nice property. I don't think we'd want to see a lot of development there for the reasons of, you know, traffic and, and where it's the entrance to the school, and a couple times a day, it gets to be pretty busy. But it would lend itself to be a good spot, naturally, for some senior housing, where the Housing Authority is right across the street with senior housing. Again, it would also be a great spot for tennis courts and basketball courts.
We have tennis courts, but we're gonna lose a couple of basketball courts. So what's the thoughts on the board?
Or we can just let it be.
Leave it a dirt lot, like it's been for years and years now?
It's all up to you.
So what would we have to do? Would we have to put, like, an RFP out?
Well, whatever we decide to do, may or may not, you know, if you decide to go forward with potential housing there, yeah, we'd put it out for bid. If you feel as though you wanna relocate some sort of town facility there, whether, again, the basketball courts or hockey rink, whatever, then we'll keep it, and we'll start, we'll see if we can come up with some funding to go forward with that.
I'd like to see this table till January, till we can meet with the Affordable Housing and go over that and tell them basically what's going on.
Next January?
No, I'm sorry. No, coming up.
Would you like?
Till our next meeting, our meetings.
We could maybe bring the Affordable Housing Trust in on that meeting and have a joint meeting?
That would be good, too.
Okay.
Well, I was gonna ask to table it, because there, I believe there are some plans out there for recreation there, too.
Yeah, and I'm not asking you to make a decision tonight. The idea was to get you guys to start this discussion.
I think we should invite, I know Sean Riley was working on it, and Woody, the hockey coach, and Sereno, a few years ago. We had talked about basketball, volleyball, and hockey possibly there. So I would like to bring all of that, the housing, that, everyone, together, and we could discuss it that way. So maybe.
Do you wanna do it in a regularly scheduled meeting, because your meetings are going to be fairly busy going forward. We are gonna be bringing all the department heads, who a couple out of time to do their recaps, budget recaps.
Could we ask those, a lot of the boards and committees to submit some ideas to us, and then maybe we choose any to come in? I just think there's gonna be a million ideas, everyone wants to go a different way with this land, which I get, I mean, it's.
Yeah, why don't we open it up and just say we're open to suggestions for the next, and do the first meeting in February?
I mean, I do like moving the basketball courts, but we also have basketball courts in other parts of town, and we have the land we could use as well. So I don't think we necessarily have to do that.
But I, like I said, I just think we should do housing and recreation and see what everyone wants.
Get ideas open up.
We need housing. We definitely need housing. And.
Yeah, we need affordable housing, and we need senior housing.
I think it also would be important that we have some talks with some people down at the council on aging, with the residents who live across the street from the property.
I think that, yeah, open it up to everyone.
Yeah. Oh, no, no, I'm just saying specifically.
Yeah, so I, I think we might want to discuss it at 30 days from now at a meeting, then maybe hold a separate public meeting or hearing on it.
And we could put it as a placeholder, right? I mean, even next meeting, just to bring it up and talk a little bit more, maybe just gets it back out there, different viewers.
Well, now it's out there, I think we'll start getting feedback, so that's probably a good way to do it.
Okay. I definitely think we should do something that's been a dirt lot since we bought it.
But I like all the ideas. I think senior housing would be good there. I think basketball sports would be good there. There's plenty of options.
Well, the reason I specifically bring up the council on aging, I know the seniors appreciate it, having the conversations with us, or with the department heads, with, and when they have colonial power group come in, to have that one-on-one conversation with them, with the residents who live across from the property, I think that would be very valuable.
I agree. And again, like I said, that maybe they can post it down the senior center, that word can get out there as well. Shoot them a email. Scott.
Roger, there?
Okay. All right, so we will be discussing that in the future. Town manager's report. This is what everyone at home watching tonight waits for every meeting.
Should I bring up my Mexican villa again?
Yes.
You should probably start the meeting with this.
No, then we'd lose all our viewers. Peggy Keating, I'm talking to you.
She called the viewers?
Well, her and Bill Cormier are two. That's, well, Ellen's here, so she's not watching tonight, so. Other than that, I don't know if we have any others.
Well, I'll paraphrase that. The Finance Committee, Finance Director, and I continue to meet with department heads in preparation for the FY24 budget. This meet, this week, actually tomorrow night, we will be meeting with Gulf, Cable Advisory, Library, and the Fire Department. Next Wednesday, we're meeting with School Department, Social Vocational, and they'll be reviewing the, my Town Manager's Walkman budget. This will complete the first round of the budget meetings. At this point, we've not received revenue numbers from the state. We do not expect to receive those numbers or the governor's budget until sometime in March. Hopefully sooner, we'll start seeing something. Finance Director and I will put together some conservative revenue estimates, and we'll present a budget to this board on the 23rd, or an updated budget from the one I've already given you. As a reminder, the FY24 town meeting warrant is open. You opened it in December 12th, so I wanna, you know, I will likely ask you to close it on February 13th. This, I believe we're meeting on the 13th. That will give the planning board time to hold public hearings prior to town meeting on April 3rd. We've not received any requests for citizens petitions yet. So I urge any citizens or group that are interested in submitting a citizen's petition, explore the town website for information, or contact my office. I'd be happy to assist you with that. Planning Board is meeting to discuss some potential zoning articles to include on the warrant. There will be an article for the Folio School Ramp, an article for local adoption of a Mass General Law that will enable your board, the Board of Selectment, to set speed zones. We're gonna have an article for tax work-off program for veterans, and I'm sure several other articles will be submitted to go along with our usual housekeeping capital requests and general funding. Liz Shea has been successful in obtaining a technical assistance grant for mass housing to develop the zoning guidelines that will comply with the MBTA community's requirement. Liz has also been working with me to onboard a grant writer that will be seeking funding for the rehabilitation of the Memorial Bridge. This is something we started months ago, actually, it was last year of town meeting, we got money from CPA for a grant writer. We had no success in the RFPs until recently. Melissa Ponder is a resident of Abington. She's been working with the Quincy Community Development and Planning Department for quite some time. She has extensive experience in grant writing and research. So Melissa has already identified several, several possible grant opportunities. So we're looking forward to moving that project forward. As a reminder again, there will be a hazard mitigation meeting via Zoom Tuesday the 17th, so you're all encouraged to participate, and the info on that is on the town webpage. Waiting on a written proposal from the Barrett Group regarding assistance with the RFP for the North and Center Schools. Judy Barrett and I had a conference call last week to discuss the parameters and responsibilities in development, developing the document. So we're looking forward to getting something published and out to the development community. As soon as they schedule the Barrett Group will accommodate, they are pretty busy. As previously reported, the town has hired Trade, Traffic Info Communications, Inc., to conduct a study of the MBTA crossings in town. Traffic Info has had their engineers out in the field doing observation work this week. Expect to have a draft report to this board on January 23rd. After you've had a chance, we've reviewed the draft, and we can make up some comments and some questions. We'll schedule Traffic Info to appear in front of the board for presentations of their findings and recommendations. We're also planning that for February. We have only received one request for an appointment to the Oprahyod Settlement Committee. I'll work to get some information out again on social media this week regarding the new committee. Hopefully, we'll see more applications, and the board will be able to make some appointments in February. The search for a new Council on Aging Director continues. The job posting closed on the past Friday. We've received over half a dozen good applications. Interviews are scheduled for next week on Tuesday and Wednesday. Lindsay Wright, Jack Libby from the Council on Aging, and I will sit in on the, will conduct the interviews. So I look forward and hope to have a decision made by the end of next week. And as a prelude to our next meeting, I plan to present this board with updated budget, as well as an analysis of our mid-FY23 revenues and expenditures. Additionally, I will be presenting my goals and objection, objectives and objections for FY24.
Okay, very good. Couple of things. It's ACAM, not Cable Advisory Board, that's going to FinCom. But that's just technicality. On the hazardous mitigation meeting, could we send out another Code Red prior to that?
Sure.
Just so make sure everyone.
Scott, I love sending out Code Reds.
Just remember, who told me to do that? Send Code Red.
Like a new toy for you or something.
And I think that's all I have. Good job, Scott.
Scott, the, you were talking about the citizen position warrants. Is there something on the website where they can go, a form for them to use? Were you doing that?
There's information on the website ought to go about it. I'm not sure if we had the form up last year, but everything from last year is still up there, and I'll double check and make sure. We do prefer and encourage them to come in and talk to me if they can, so I can help them navigate it.
Okay.
But I think we did put a form up, and I'll double check, make sure it's still there.
Could you send us all the Town Manager's annual review forms again? Because we should get going on that within the next month or so.
Seems like we just did that.
Yeah, we just did it.
Time flies when you have it fun, Scott.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'd like to get that going.
Kevin, you alluded to it, so for, for future meetings, we're also gonna be talking with, you said, the department heads for the town of Abington. Scott, is the, is the Finance Committee there having regular meetings discussing department budgets? And you're sitting on them, correct? And you're sitting on them, correct?
I'm sitting, I'm not following you.
Oh, no, so is the Finance Committee having regular meetings to conduct budget overviews or budget reviews for FY twenty-four proposals?
Yeah, we've been meeting every Wednesday night.
Okay.
Yep.
So with that being said, do we, as the Board of Selectmen, do we need to have the department heads come in and give the same presentation?
No, you won't have the same presentation, but a lot like we did last year, and that's what I referred to earlier, that you're going to have some busy months, is that the departments will come in here and give you sort of an overview, if there's any big asks or anything like that. Everybody has pretty much issued a budget that's level service, you know, so there's a few that will have, some outliers that'll have, have some bigger asks, but all the departments are going to be coming through.
Okay, I'm just trying to, I'm looking at it just time-saving, and being, just us being productive. If the Finance Committee is going over every single line of the department's budgets, especially the big picture lines, wouldn't it be better, and according to the town charter, you sitting on those meetings, wouldn't it be better to have those big-ticket things come from you, instead of having each department head come in individually?
Yeah, sure, if you don't want to meet any of the department heads, but I think it's nice to have them come through, so everybody can hear, including the town, just get an overview of what the department heads are doing, get an operational update. But you will get a budget from me, that's my recommended budget.
If it's a regular level budget, if it's a level budget for, for the departments, I think, I don't want to, they, they do so much during the day, our departments do much during, so much during the day, that I don't want, I have them to have them double, to come before us, when that's the Finance Committee's job to do that.
It's also their job. It's the job of the selectmen to review the budget as well, and it's also their job, and they're well aware of that, that it's up to them in, in coming upon them to come in here.
We're big, we're big picture in setting priorities.
I do agree, I get both sides, but I do agree with having them come in, because it gives the residents another avenue to kind of see, and questions might be asked from residents in the audience and.
Well, and I also ask you guys to.
I get both sides of it.
The Finance Committee is filled here in this room, and it's also taped, so if people have questions for the Finance Committee, they can do that, too. Again, like, everyone's time is valuable. I understand that everyone, we volunteer our time in the town, but the town employees, I think, I think it'd be more productive to have an overview as the Finance Committee does that. If there are big-ticket items that are important to what our goals and priorities are, what your priorities and priorities are, Scott, I think, then, then that's a different conversation to have. Then, then I would say have departments come in, but I don't think it would be necessary for every department head to come in.
Well, you won't have every department head. You'll have the ones that you typically see as police, fire, DPW, probably Board of Health.
Which we've been doing anyway, even outside of budget season, we've been having the department heads in for.
No, I'm not against that either. I'm not, I'm, that's, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying this budgets are doing our budget process. Having updates from department heads throughout the year, yeah, I think that's great for us.
I think the more TV shows there are on, Selectmen, FinCom, whatever it is, the better.
What's the downside?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I understand your respect for their time, but they're getting paid for it.
I'd like to have every department head in here.
No, I just.
Guess I'll go against the grain.
You rebel, you.
Is there a downside?
I guess, I'm not sure if you could say there was a downside, I just think, just for us being more productive, that's, that's not a critique of any, that's not a critique of anyone.
I think we are very productive.
But I'm just saying, just for us being productive.
I think it actually helps us be more productive, having them in here and being able for us to ask some direct questions and.
Yeah, other than that, then we should attend all the FinCom meetings.
Oh, boy.
Homonymity.
Well, that's why we have a Board of Selectmen, to bring them before us.
But that's also written as the, as the town charter, and that's why we also have a strong town manager to go to the.
Right, but there's nowhere in the charter that says we can't bring them before us and discuss the budget.
We're not making any decisions, we're just about their budget.
And that's, I think, they're doing their job, I think it's just getting an overview from here and kind of being transparent, yeah. I think it's good, I mean, I think you almost alluded to it before about having to kind of be more interactive with it, so I think we should have them in. I mean, I understand their time, but.
I always suggested having the department heads come out throughout the year, so yes, to your point.
But I'm saying, like, even for finance, you know.
I remember having this argument last year, and I think you were on the opposite side.
No, actually, no, I was not. I was talking about productivity and our guidelines and how we're following town charter. That's a big.
Well, I don't think we're violating town charter by having the department heads come before us.
Quite honest with you, I think most of them appreciate the opportunity to come in here and, and meet with you guys.
I know the chief loves these here every week.
I'll talk to the camera if you want.
We know.
And John Stone's really getting, you know, very comfortable here.
Yeah, John brings PowerPoints, so we're going to see the brand-new fire station pitches soon, and DPW.
But I'll put it on the agenda whenever the chairman wants.
I think we should continue with the way we've been doing it.
Executive session time.
Okay, so we are going to go into executive session, so thank you all for coming, thank you all for watching in TV land.
Make a motion to enter an executive session to discuss re- as a respect to collective bargaining and litigation, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, and to not return to open session.
A second?
Roll call vote, Ms. Agadee.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
Tim.
Yes.
Mike.
Aye.
And the chairman votes yes.